COVID update. Last three, four weeks, we have had no residents test positive. We've been testing twice a week, all residents and staff. We have been having kind of like one employee once a week or so. So we have an additional person tested on Friday. No residents at this time.
And no major issues with those that do?
No, no, it's been working. Yeah, people, most people complaining about sore throats and colds and those kind of things.
I heard anecdotally, cases are spreading like crazy. Proms, baseball games, and all of a sudden, there's a bunch of kids that are out just around the area, not necessarily in Claremont like this.
It is springtime, it is springtime too.
But also her symptoms are a lot less severe. Who's out? We did have another positive case of a county employee who was pretty active here on site, helping with the landscaping. And so he's obviously isolated until later this week. But we've been monitoring symptoms for everybody that was near that person. So yeah, he's doing okay.
But and then outdoors way more likely than indoors.
Exactly, yeah. So just keep an eye on it and keep doing what we're doing. We're kind of real at this point, so. Great.
Dave's up?
Come on.
Want your replacement room to?
He's a senior. So I'm not going to put him on the squad. Under major developments on policy issues, we have the policy for watch procedures for some of the suicide watches DOC. We're still circulating it. It should be in the next commissioner's meeting for approval. As far as staffing, we have five correctional officer vacancies. We did have Haley Richardson start last week. She's going to be outstanding. Renee Bella Vance, our new medical services coordinator, starts Wednesday. Mark Dean is here today. He's going to be filling my spot. Numbers remain pretty consistent. Female treatment, we currently have one male treatment. We have seven. Under major challenges, I wouldn't say a challenge, it's more of an upgrade. Firemen did re carpet the CCC main corridors up in the admin areas. Came out really nice, looks much better. Next week, they'll be down in the lower part of the jail, working the radio room. As far as meetings, in terms of me, the most important thing really is mine is coming off the books. This is all the county, the old ours. The attorney general's office has agreed to pick it up and run it for the state. That is really where it belongs. That's where it should have been all along, but anyway, ended on us and be a big relief. We had five males, completed 90-day portion of trails. No one from aftercare. We just started another yoga for men and women. That's starting up. That's our next mine from this piece that's coming on board. And we are scheduled to receive the final equipment from the UNH USDA grant. This is the grant that upgraded our IT stuff and helped us create those cards that we were using in all the units during COVID. So we're going to have to drop treatment. We could have a clinician out with COVID, still working for the CC, still working class at the CCC. And that's, we have one more out of that coming in. That exhaust grant that got us roll-ons, so. Training, education. Corporal Jamie Farnsworth graduated from the 117th Corrections Academy. Coughlin, SD, Hanum, and Sergeant Farnsworth and Corporal Robert all instructor or proctored at the class. Also, Jamie Farnsworth was nominated by the class and instructors for the honor grad. So that's very, very nice. We don't get that all the time in Silver County. So we had the honor grad in his last academy class. Any questions?
Sounds good.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Part of what HR has been focusing on now, I think it'll take us probably to the end of the fiscal year. There's a lot of events that are starting to occur in our community. There were several job fairs that were hosted in the area. We did get ourselves connected with the Newport Chamber and Claremont Chamber had a joint job fair in Newport. And to be really transparent, they're just not well attended. We go every time with all our bells and whistles and you've got to get people to come for it to be worthwhile. And so it's really unfortunate. So I think where we will start to see the shift is in other forms of community events, community cleanup days, community, we've done chili cook-offs in the past. I think that's the lane we're going to start trying to take. What works really well is when people watch and a group of employees have fun together. Because they're like, what is that over there? Who is that? What are they doing? And it's almost like you've just got to be around other energy that's happening and sweep that in rather than it being the primary. Because when it's the primary, come here and look for jobs at a job fair, people just don't attend. The last three or four we have attended have had minimum, I mean, this event, they did a wonderful job. The employers had really good energy. There were like 45 employers, everyone from us to Ruger to Wayland to every little nursing organization to every, they had contractors there looking for painters. I mean, they were, the energy was really good in the room and there was maybe a handful of people. And three of the people we talked to were not eligible to work. Were just looking for volunteer opportunities. And there was like three of the five. So it was really unfortunate. So we're just going to try to stay positive and try something different. So I say that because what we're going to start doing is just looking to snap a partner with us to attend things that maybe don't look like job fairs to just try and get us out in the community in a different way, so we'll keep that in mind.
You know, there's a big summer fest over in Sonoma this year.
Okay.
You could get a boot there.
Yeah, right.
Because they're working for people.
Right, absolutely.
And they'll get thousands of people.
Right, yes. And exactly, broader than just Claremont and Newport. But yeah, what other communities do that we can be a part of? And last year, a group of us attended the cleanup day they did in Claremont. It was a lot of fun and a lot of people asked, because you didn't have shirts with Sullivan County, everyone was wearing the same cleanup day shirt. They asked, where are you guys from? Can we join your groups? So we're just, we're going to have to keep an eye on that, try to get out there in a different way. And so you may see HR starting to talk about some of that. We've all talked about Mark Dean here with us. So an update for senior leadership recruitment, we have that all wrapped up. Mark is going to do wonderful here. So that's really good news. But for the nursing home administrator role, so for Ted's replacement, we're at the phase where we've issued DISC assessments to two individuals. I think Derek will talk to you a little bit more about maybe scheduling the second round. I have the reports back from Primex. The two candidates filled them out pretty fast and Primex has their report and Carl is ready to meet with us, so we'll talk schedules when we can. I did attend the Primex summit, it was great. Either goes really well or really not, but the day one, the seminars went to with the same instructor. He was fantastic. Mary and I sat in those sessions, he did a wonderful job. So we really got a lot of great leadership takeaways from those trainings. I appreciated that opportunity. Thank you for suggesting that. Staffing, new hires and rehires and then departures. You'll see those charts, I'll just keep updating those for us. April was a little quieter in both arenas and the month prior. Maybe that's a good thing. I think we could see a shift in the new hire opportunity. We have a lot of energy happening from the nursing group and the nursing homes. We try to hire people's kiddos for the summer. So what roles could we put them in? And they might be youth 14, 15, 16, 17. Where could we put them in the nursing home to be of help? The unit aid role we talk a lot about. So we're getting ready, nursing has reached out for partnership to group them. So we can take a group of 15, 16, 17-year-olds, put them through one orientation, set the expectations in one setting, so kind of create like a student group that we can kind of carry through the workforce together for the whole process. So we're getting ready to start doing some of that energy. And then just other disclaimer from the HR standpoint is everything we get ready to do to wrap up the fiscal year. So all the evaluations that are due in FY '22, we need to get all those in. Whose mayors are still open, we've got to process all those. Any conversations about wages, whether it be just the contract increases or COLA and any other wage program, that all has to be processed through HR and payroll. So we're just getting ready to take on all that work as well. And then this week, the other announcement I want to make and remind everyone is it's open enrollment for benefits. So this week, we'll have three different benefit fairs. Tomorrow will be Newport, then we go to DOC, and then we do the nursing home. So this week, HR will be out trying to get folks to reelect, new election, make changes. If you're on any form of platform of our insurance, we have to have a touch point with you. So we'll just do all that and then get ready for all those entries in our system for July 1 start. So this next month and a half is pretty busy for HR, but we'll get it all together. Any other questions?
Thanks, Hillary.
Of course.
You always fit more in than in five minutes. Most of us could fit in.
Go, 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 go. That's how we operate, HR.
Practice at home.
Right.
So Lionel is not with us today, so we'll skip his report. Mary?
Is that me? Okay. So for facilities operations, for May's report, we've spent a lot of time here with a few different resources from our department to just get the building set up for today's events as well as for hopefully residents to move in, possibly next week. In the DOC, phase one of the HVAC controls has been completed. Phase two is what's in the proposed budget for FY '23. We are finding that there's a couple of controllers that need to be replaced sooner than that. So that's a separate agenda item and I'll talk more about that in a couple minutes. Also in the DOC, we have an ongoing problem with the condensate tank that overflows. And we finally have worked to the bottom of that and found out that our water has a high resistance in it. So the type of sensor that we were using to stop the water from filling up condensate tanks was not working. So we've changed that. The flooding of the tanks was fine until most recently it's, the floor drains no longer drained. And so we actually ended up with a good-sized flood in there and then also an excavation project outside determining where that problem is. We've had Sterns come in with the camera. And what we're finding is that when that drain pipe, once it leaves the DOC building and goes to its final destination is the sections of pipe weren't properly connected. I'm thinking at the original installation of that line, whenever it was. So we now have multiple areas where that pipe has broken apart. So we are working to get that backup combination between our staff as well as a local site contractor that we're, we've been using. An update on the Sterns air conditioning. We're working with Denron and Dakin to identify and price a three- to four-year solution for the air conditioning failures beyond just replacing components. I know you all know sort of the history that we've had with that particular air conditioning unit. I believe Denron and Dakin are meeting with us later, later this week to talk through that a little bit more. We also have Eversource coming in and they are monitoring our system for a week to identify possible surges because we've also noticed some other funky electrical issues with some other equipment. And funky being the frantic term there. Work on the Newport roof replacement started on May 5 and is continuing through this week. That product is going really well and we've had great weather for it. So they are moving right along. As far as training and education, as Hillary mentioned earlier, I went to the Primex summit as well as Sarah Ruyard. And that is always, always a great opportunity for leadership training. And this year, it was nice to, that was really the first in-person large event that I've been able to attend. So it felt good to be back with counterparts across the state. Alan Penders, our plumber, and Matt Bover completed the underground storage tank operator certification. And Matt also received his associate's degree in facilities management from Manchester Community College. I believe his graduation is Wednesday or Thursday this week. But he was also recognized by Manchester Community College for academic achievement as the top graduate in the facilities management program. So that was pretty impressive, so. Then, okay. So if we move back to phase two of the HVAC controls. So we've completed phase one, which replaced all the control wiring as well as the main controller for the entire system. And once that controller was replaced, what it did is it identified that there's three or there's other several subcontrollers were not functioning properly. And so with the update of the new main controller, what's happening is now that those subcontrollers aren't working, it's relying us to make manual adjustments that we are doing with our staff. And that also includes coming in on the weekends to make those as well, too. So where we are is phase two has been proposed out of the capital plan for the FY '23 project. However, we really need to replace those controllers as soon as practical with lead times being of concern as well as getting into Johnson Controls installation schedule. So in order to sort of save our place in line and get those controllers coming, what I would like the board of commissioners to approve is the materials cost from this sub-portion of phase two. And you can see the attached quotes and then a table on page two that shows you the three subcontrollers that need to be replaced and with the materials totaling $7,632.49. This allows us to get those coming and save our spot in Johnson Controls lineup. And so although the FY '23 budget isn't approved, most likely we would not get an invoice for these until the budget is approved. So it probably will not be of consequence. But if a bill does come sooner or if that piece of the project doesn't get approved for some reason, we would be able to absorb the $7,632.49 out of this year's current budget, perhaps maybe using some of the emergency funds that haven't been used. So would request that the commissioners approve us to purchase the three controllers in order to keep that moving and reduce the amount of overtime that we have to have by making manual adjustments.
How old was that corporate?
So it's from the renovation. So when they did, so what was that, 2010, when he built with CCC? So yeah, so they retrofitted the whole HVAC system for not only the new construction but also for the jail. And so what, the majority of the part that we have sort of gotten ourselves into trouble with is that it never was updated along the way. And so now everything is antiquated because we have not upgraded either both hardware and software along the way. And so now it needs to be completely, completely replaced. Although a lot of the sub, sub-devices, not controllers, but the devices that control the VAVs and other monitor temperature and things like that, a lot of those won't need to be replaced because they're the same. And now that we have the control wiring to those devices replaced, we can see that the majority of those that are critical to the system are working well. And then that's when we discovered that the subcontrollers are not working properly.
But the system itself is in pretty good shape?
Yeah. Yeah, all the HVAC components are, work really well. It's just really a control problem. And if you remember, like for, I mean, Dave said for a long period of time, the CCC is hot. And so we, you know, it all goes back to these, to really the control system. So we've been able to overcome that, but it's still continuing to replace the parts to bring it up to today and ultimately will give us more control of the system.
So because of, so because of those pieces of the system that aren't working, we have to have people come in on the weekends, you said?
Yep.
So if we, if we order this stuff and the budget doesn't get approved, we still have to have somebody come in on the weekend and we spend money on parts and we just don't want money out the windows for people. Okay.
Yeah.
I agree with buying this stuff.
Yep.
But I feel uncomfortable with the fact that it might not get approved if it's something that we really need.
Yeah, so, yeah, it is part of the capital, capital plan. So it doesn't necessarily hit the bottom line of the budget as much as if we were just doing, basically if we were to do it as just a repair out of our regular budget, that affects the bottom line of the maintenance and operations. Whereas even taking it in bigger chunks like this, it qualifies for our capital plan so that it doesn't hit the bottom line. It would either come out of what we set aside each year for capital or it would come out of the capital reserve.
Okay.
I would move in accordance with ARF 212, the procurement and management policy and move to authorize direct facilities and operations to purchase controllers, 6000 controls, Inc., of Milwaukee, Wisconsin, for $7,632.49, but they're made in 2022, dated proposals as presented today.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
We don't need to, we don't need to say anyone on lighter than.
Yeah, no, I'll know.
All right.
Thank you.
Motion passes.
So I know Commissioner Nelson just mentioned this a couple of meetings ago, but we received a contract amendment request from Kuzanov's Forest Products for our chip delivery based on the fuel volatility and the cost of diesel fuel in order to get trucking to deliver chips. So they are struggling with getting, getting trucking and want to propose a fuel surcharge that's based on the fluctuations from a national index on diesel fuel. So what they are proposing is that if diesel were to go above $5 a gallon, that there would be a different range of surcharge and that would be based on per ton. And they are proposing to use a nationwide factor in order to address that. And you'll see there's a second one. I think everybody has this graph that is from the U.S. Energy Information Administration. And this just shows general, since over the last year, what fuel has done particularly after March. You can see that it's jumped up. The one thing that is important, which is why I printed this out, is you can see the royal blue line represents the factor of the NASH across the nation. And if you look green is New England. So really in general, New England has been running pretty close to the national, if not a little bit above if we look closer to what's happened in the last, the last quarter. So it, the national has been either better or reflecting our current fuel costs. So taking a look at what this surcharge does, again, it only affects it when it's above $5 a gallon, which you can see that it really has only hit that in March of this year and for some time has actually dropped pretty close to $5 or below. I took a look at if we were above the maximum cost that this surcharge would have, assuming that for 52 weeks, we were at, at the highest surcharge at $8 a gallon, the most that it would cost us is $13,000 in additional costs. So on a $250,000 budget, that is, that is minor. So, but it's still, it's still real money. And so what I wanted to do is bring this request to you to see if you would approve amending their contract to pay the surcharge as they proposed.
I shouldn't have loaded last week. I was going to say, whatever, work, work. Do you allow them to market? Well, wait, well, that means if diesel went down to $2 a gallon, they probably want to cut the cost.
Yeah. Yeah.
But I, yeah, I mean, it's.
Say that again.
We moved to outside as directed facilities and operations to certainly execute the contract qualification request from, say that again?
Kuzanov.
Kuzanov Forest Products. As noted in their letter dated May 5, 2022, fuel surcharge to help meet the volatility of the market and ensure the reliability of chip deliveries to the Indian Brown Mass Plant as presented today.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
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 Yeah, we'd like to hold them to contract.
They would just cancel it, yeah, exactly. So thank you very much.
That's only fair.
Yeah.
Maybe they'll give us a good contract next time.
Pretty good job, Dick.
Yeah, and this isn't a low wage position.
Okay, we got.
Hi, bye.
Just carry on.
All right. Up there in this, the 10-months report through April. For finances, we came in at a average census of 120 versus a budget of 136. Lewis provided some nice graphics here that we can, see Medicare came in at negative $50,000 variance and which was mostly made up by the high private census. The positive variance was over $47,000 there. As we've been seeing is Medicaid is certainly the major aspect that has been running low. So there's a $63,000 dollar variance there.
Yeah, but those privates are probably on their way to.
Yeah, they don't last long.
But you can tell this, that's a.
But yeah, we.
That's the first one to go up, so that's good that it's going up.
Right. And if we look at the insurance we've been talking about, really, that's been relatively strong this year, but not last month. So there's a $10,000 negative variance there. So when we, when we look at the Medicare B and the managed care B revenue, there again, there's another $9,000 variance, so all told, monthly variance of $86,000. If we look at the next page, revenue through the April 2022, certainly shows how we've been running. The Medicaid variance is $413,000. Our B total is $112,000 and the Meta A is $612,000. You know, there again, with private somewhere, made up by the private and insurance managers, you can see. Two things that are not showing up in this report. One that will show up in the May report is Medicaid assessment. We just got a notification of payments for there. That is running on track. We expect over $500,000 for the our third quarter. So that's, that's running on track for budget. The ProShare is, we have a meeting with the HHS tomorrow on, via Zoom or whatever, or Microsoft, to provide some initial information to the facilities, to the county facilities is what ProShare is going to be looking at. That'll probably come in June. And so they're going to be, as usual, we also annotated where the Gopher money of $300,000 has come in, into play and that comes on the miscellaneous income. So we're going to date with a negative variance of $492,000. Next page shows the Medicare length of stay. And certainly see Medicare net revenue was really quite a bit more of $104,000 as compared to March of $71,000. You can see how census has been running through the year, averaging 117 as total. Near day due to a small, kind of a weak first quarter. So the second and third quarters will run in the 120s. Looks like. Looks like, um, be similar, certainly, uh, for the third quarter. And then, uh, admissions discharges in April, we had ten admissions, ten discharges. Fiscal year-to-date, we're a hundred and thirteen admissions, ninety-four discharges. Certainly continue to, uh, to accept and admit, uh, all patients that we can. And then on the last page, the, uh, month-end aging analysis came in at two point four million, which was a hundred and thirteen thousand increase from last month.
Yeah, on the admissions and discharges of the six that were discharged at the hospital, uh, going there coming back and forth.
Yeah, that's where we find, right, often, yes, oftentimes we do. That's where we find them kind of looping back into other, as re-admission.
Yeah.
Some of us are geared up.
Does everything have a control switch?
Yeah, the ones we gotta put into the budget.
No.
It's cold and colder.
Yeah.
I recommend. If it's like the one in our office, man, don't bother. We have work.
It's me, so hopefully.
So the next thing we've added on the agenda is, um, private pay rate increases. As, as you're aware, we've been talking about the positive rate increases in the budget process. The kind of dynamic is that whenever we do a rate increase, excuse me, we need to provide a thirty-day advanced notice of that increase to our current residents and for any new residents coming on board. So that's why we're requesting it now so that it comes in line with the July first fiscal year. So we're recommending semi-private going from three-ten to three-twenty-five, about a five percent increase and private pay from three-forty to three-fifty-five. Of note, you know, I was thinking it was two years, it was almost three years since we've had an increase due to COVID situation.
Over there.
Yeah. And, uh, you know, from, from what our, uh, reviewing with other facilities local, this, this is still within the ballpark of being competitive.
Yeah, you gotta think. I would move to authorize the administrator to, um, do semi-private room rates from three-twenty to three-twenty-five and private room rates from three-forty to three-fifty-five.
Okay. Who says three-ten to three-twenty-five? I said three-twenty.
Oh, no, three-ten to three-twenty-five, sorry. And three-forty to three-fifty-five.
How's that?
On favor?
Aye.
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 I have to read the fine print because the big print one.
My destiny.
You've done your bad money twice.
Thank you, Commissioner.
All right. Family manager.
Oh, boy, all right. So the shout-out today, um, there's too many people to, to list. I think with, uh, the earlier festivities, um, if I went by name, I probably forget somebody. But wow, it was all hands on deck from the landscaping, which, uh, was not just our natural resources folks, Lionel, uh, the Commissioner's office. We shut down for a few hours. Sharon and Dodi and Kirsten were out here digging. Commissioner Osgood pitched in for a few hours to help out.
Sharon changed me into a.
Now you were there before.
Yeah, thank you for that.
My apologies for not showing up. I was just replaying stuff at home.
Well, you can replay stuff here. But Mary's team with Sarah, Poncho, Jesse, Brad, I'm not sure who else. Alan was here. Um, and of course Dave and several of his team members here just, we were sweeping. We were putting stuff away, working with Blanca and Bailey, kind of scrambling to kind of arrange the room and figure out how we wanted it set up. So a lot of work. I think, uh, I was pretty happy with how the ceremony went. We were, you know, when you don't have time to practice these things, you're always sort of holding your breath. And oh, man, I hope we don't forget something or screw anything up majorly. But it seemed like everybody had fun. We stayed on time, which is good. We didn't, you know, make the governor late for anything, but.
Well, in school, generally, he zips in, zips out. He was generally excited.
Well, it was a great opportunity.
Yeah.
He stopped in Unity and we'll talk maybe later on in the, for the nursing home. I'd like to hear kind of how that went for everybody that was there. But, but this was weeks in the making, uh, well, years in the making, I guess. But the ceremony itself, for the fifth or sixth time, we had to reschedule it. I think it was worth the wait.
And the rain held off till just now.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, so I think we got some really good photographs. Appreciate Elise Crossman helping out with the scissors and the tape.
Nice to see that Clamont was excited too, you know, but, uh,
Yeah.
Merrill was here and.
Pretty good turnout, so, um, good stuff. There's a lot of people that, that were pitching in, rolling up their sleeves. So it was pretty, pretty cool.
Yeah, Rocky wanted the city councilors. Has not been super thrilled. It showed up. It was cool.
Yeah, I didn't know how to read, you know, some of those folks. I don't know what their personal feelings are about it, but the fact that they were here was kind of nice. I know it was Matt Moushin, Rocky, Deb Mato.
Oh, so that was the woman I couldn't.
Yeah, I think that was it for councilors. Dale, Mayor Gerard said he was gonna come. He must've got tied up. He said he'd plan on it, but, um, good stuff. So thanks, everybody, for the hard work. Yeah, Hillary, I think you, were you here too? Did you guys come down here? You didn't. Well, maybe you should have.
Next time.
Next time, yeah, next time I do this, yeah. Be a good.
I'll help with the nursing home. The governor said we're all set.
Yeah, I didn't want to overlook you inadvertently. I don't know if putting you on the spot.
No, you know, you're.
Bad job, I mean.
No, that's okay.
Um, the budget update, um, I am, I feel sheepish because I know we talked about having another meeting and now I can't remember what we said.
Well.
It was gonna be this week, right? Was it gonna be on Friday?
It was gonna be, but, um, I don't think we.
EFC has meeting tomorrow at one.
Yeah, that's, that's a separate.
I spoke to Spillsbury and I said, why don't you guys, they're just gonna come up with something and then, then we'll plan a meeting. But I didn't think it made a lot of sense talking to him that we jumped into something before they had a chance to.
Well, we at least need to do, because I want the Commissioner's budget, which is gonna be the MS forty-six, and we want to submit that by the twenty-seventh. So, um, I just thought we could have one more session, at least for the Commissioner's. We talked about inviting them.
Yeah.
We don't need to, because at the end of the day, your budget will be that at the public hearing and then they'll be able to get their, uh, their final changes if they want to.
Yeah, I know where they want to be, so we're having a call.
So do we have time this week? That's what I couldn't remember. I thought we.
We, we talked about doing it later in the day, though.
Yeah.
I'm fine.
Yeah, I know.
Is there any day this week that's better than another?
I can do the week with work meta for me.
Thursday, I've got something, so Thursday, Friday are also that'd be the.
It could be early next week, too.
Yeah.
It gives, it still gives us time before Friday, twenty-seventh.
Be easier if we did it early next week.
Okay. Which is starting the.
Monday, the twenty-third.
Monday's the twenty-third.
Yeah, I'm not like Monday, Tuesday.
Then School of Farm Day is Monday, Tuesday, well, Monday with the rain out day too.
Yeah, so I'm not back until Thursday.
Up next week?
Yeah.
Okay.
Close that put us to our deadline.
Yeah, uh.
We have to do it then Wednesday this week?
Which we could.
Well, I mean, I can do it Thursday, Friday, just not at night. As long, yeah, as long as at night and.
We can do it Wednesday this week, I mean.
Wednesday, Thursday, three or something like that or two, yeah. Wednesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, like, you know, three o'clock or three-thirty, whatever that works.
Okay.
Yeah, so he stops at night.
Wednesday, Thursday?
Yeah, either one of those days is fine.
What do you prefer?
Drink a day all range, my schedule.
Yeah. Those two, Wednesday and.
Wednesday, three?
Yeah.
Great.
You're not talking this week, you're talking next week or?
This week.
This week.
This week.
Okay, the twenty-fifth, yeah.
And we will invite the EFC or do you want to just have it, the ProShares?
I don't even bother.
Okay, great.
We'll just do it.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't, I don't want to be.
Does that give you time with ProShare, you think? Because that's tomorrow.
Right.
You'll have enough?
Yeah.
That'll be, uh, set in stone or?
Well, probably not, but it'd be close.
Close enough, okay, all right. All right, perfect, let's do that.
Yeah, generally the guest notes are pretty close when the, when the Q does it.
Right.
Yeah, okay, awesome. So Wednesday, three P M.
You're saying this, this Wednesday?
This Wednesday, the twenty-fifth.
Is the eighteenth, not the twenty-fifth.
Am I in the wrong week? My bad.
You're in the wrong week.
Jesus, sorry.
Good catch.
It's just, the only difference is seven days. Okay, and we'll just do it in the regular Commissioner's conference room downstairs.
Okay.
Beautiful. And we'll just get to the final number and then that'll help us with the MS forty-six. It'll give Dodi a full week to, to prep it, so.
They're meeting on what, salaries to finalize those?
That's EFC. They're, they're coming on recess because they didn't get finished.
They're doing that tomorrow?
They're doing that tomorrow because tomorrow night is the delegation meeting to set the salary. So that's at six-thirty. I don't know if you had a plan on that. I, I was going to go to it just to answer any questions, I think. Well, there's, Janet's got her equipment account request on the agenda, so just in case there's a question about that, I can help, I guess, if Janet's not there.
I suppose we can give them a heads up. They have a meeting on Wednesday to come up with that or find them.
Sure, if you want, yeah.
We can just tell them what meeting they're giving to. We say to ask what they were gonna give them for us.
They're gonna talk about the project. So if you were there with the governor, you could share whatever was said today, you know what? There's a few other things on the agenda. Oh, Lionel's, um, right-of-way for the second New Hampshire term, like the DOT covert.
Yeah.
I think that's gonna get settled.
Oh, that's right.
And I think that was about it, right?
Well, I'm glad some of you of them were here to hear the governor.
Yeah. It's, it's, yeah, I think it's about it. There's nothing really much for the.
Yeah, I was glad as many of them were here to hear the governor talk this up and talk about the.
Yep, that's good. And then as far as dates go, I think we talked about June fourteenth, the public hearing.
Yeah.
And I'll let Chair Cluier know. I mean, I know they have to set it, but they, they basically do what you guys want when it comes to that. So do the public hearing on June fourteenth. That'll probably be in the evening, but I'll talk to him. It's probably like at six or six-thirty type of thing. I don't know about location yet. I know typically it's probably one of the tech center rooms, but I don't know if their policies have changed as far as, you know, having functions in there with COVID. I think Newport's been loosening up, but I'll see if Fairmont isn't in it, if they are. Do you guys have a preference which, which location do you have?
I was in Fairmont last time, so I suppose it's Newport's too.
They do it Newport, yeah. And then that would set us, say again?
No, that makes a huge difference, but yeah, I think Newport.
And then, um, that would set up the convention for twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth, thirtieth of June and really kind of leave it up to them to set down. That would be, that's the range it would be if we get, if we get in it by the twenty-seventh.
So, yeah, all the EFC is doing is to delegate this official salary so we can.
Correct.
Hope they don't zero us out.
Okay, so, uh, nursing home renovation update. So between Ted, Mary and Commissioner Hebert.
Sure.
I don't know how today.
You wanna go, Ted?
Let's start it off. It was, um, certainly we had, we met with, uh, there again, Commissioner Hebert joined us. We met with key department heads, department, most of our department heads. Very, very pleasant and, um, encouraging meeting. Just sincerely wanted to say hi and, um, and thank him for his engagement within the process. And he, he went right into, um, I understand what you're asking for. You guys have a lot of, you guys are the talk of the town. Talked about the meeting that we attended to it in, uh, Charleston Rotary. Surely very aware of our indications is, are, uh, that he's really pushing for, between forty and fifty million dollars into this fund that he, that he feels because of the ARCA requirements would need to be available for other county nursing homes. However, um, he thinks that twenty-five million would make sense to go into the nursing facility. Mary was able to describe what the, um, kind of the scope of what we were looking at. And he was really engaged. I thought it was really good.
Yeah, and he seemed to, uh, he said, yeah, to go through some loops with the federal government guidelines on that. But he said, he said they were able to work all that out. So, uh, I don't, I don't know. But he, he asked a lot of good questions in there. And he was really, he really wanted to know what, what you guys really did there. Yes, he.
Well, yeah, the fact that it's shovel-ready or just about shovel-ready and having almost every other nursing home has done it up to the last few years.
And he did say that too. He said that it's, it's the only project.
That's right, that's right.
That's anywhere near being ready.
Yeah, I'm sure. Maybe some climbing from other counties, I'm sure, but hopefully, with this one on scale will help.
Yeah, I think he had some great questions. I think it's also important to know that we were told we would have him for five minutes. He was there for thirty.
Oh, wow, thirty?
Yeah, he was there ten, he was there ten minutes early and stayed. And stayed right through until he had to come to his open house. So, um, yeah, was asking a lot of questions, not just on the project, but about, um, what census was, he asked. Hillary gave some great perspective on staffing. Yeah, he talked, uh, he talked with us a lot just about some of what the challenges are. So it was really. It was, um, it was very promising and it was nice to have him, you know, pay, pay the facilities some attention, so.
Well, I think kudos to Vanessa Perrin. I believe the genesis of that visit, that, that stop at Unity along the way to here was as a result of her diligence and her persistence in calling the governor's office and emailing the governor directly and saying, hey, we need this project. And, um, she's been, she's been a real asset. She's.
Probably go on the plaque when we get it done.
Yeah, so that's been fantastic.
Yeah, she has been, you know, the lone community voice has been out there hammering.
Yeah, yeah. So the next step, so Mary and I will very quickly shift focus now that this is behind us to the application for the two million dollars for the congressional record spending. So we have until June sixth, uh, to get that in. So that's just, it's, it's kind of a formality, but even though they told us they're going to fund it, we still have to submit some paperwork.
She had a letter to the editor of the governor group this week bragging about getting the two million to Sullivan County Nursing Home, so it's.
Oh, oh, she is Senator Shaheen?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Letter, the editor from Shaheen in the Valley.
Well, maybe instead of that occasion, we'll just copy that and say.
Eight, eight million or something she brought in for, um, upper valley projects. And that was, that was in the, in the body of it. So, yeah, she's bragging about it. It's a, that'd be.
Yeah.
Make it large.
Well, good. A little of our effort will reflect the.
Yeah.
Well, that's all good stuff. I know there's, I do have, I took a note here. I need to follow up with Deputy Director Hagaman from Gopher. I know they had talked about circling back with us on the, the process leading up to the joint fiscal committee meeting in, in June. So I'll find out whatever he needs from us and we'll support that. Okay, next up, NHAC updates. I have a big legislative, um, email from DuPont. I have not read it yet. I got it on Friday and, um, yeah, I'm not prepared to talk to this. It didn't sound like there was anything major that was burning. It's just, this is the time of year when they start tacking on amendments to bills that didn't originally have anything to do with the amendments they're doing. So DuPont's scrambling and just try to keep up with anything that has a particular county flavor to it. So, um, I did hear though that the, the bill, and now I think it's actually a Senate bill, not the original House bill regarding the seven and a half percent contribution for New Hampshire Retirement, but it's only gonna be a one-year allocation is still moving forward, so that's good news. I think that was the most important thing that we were tracking, but, um, I think there are a few other things, but I'll, I'll look into that and just, um, let you know in the next meeting what, what else is cooking. In terms of our economic development, the SCDU initiative, everything on the Sugar River Region Destination Development Plan is, is, is still going forward. Penelope is in frequent contact with Solomar. They are still targeting a, a late June completion date for another draft of the plan. We had a couple of taskers that Solomar wanted to get the Destination Council to work on, kind of like we did before where we helped, uh, refine the strategic goals in initial draft that Solomar did. Destination Council refined it and then sent them back. And it was actually a nice process because it saved some work on Solomar and it, it allowed us to get some input early on in the plan. So they've got a few other things that they want Destination Council to review. So we'll be working with that. As far as like rolling out this, this version of the plan, originally, I think we talked about this before, so forgive me if I'm repeating myself, but we talked about having a big launch event, but there's so much stuff for our plan this summer.
Oh, yeah.
An event a day that we weren't gonna be. An available day that we weren't gonna be conflicting with something else. So we're gonna find out a more low-key way of doing that. And maybe it'll just be at a Commissioner's meeting, and then we can probably do that on Zoom or record it to let folks see the recording of it. Or we could do things like the booth at the Sanofi Summer Fest and other events like that, where we can at least have a presence and continue to share. In fact, Penelope had talked about doing a pamphlet, a trifold, because that'll be a great thing to take to all these festivals and events and things. So that can just provide a current snapshot of the plan and incorporate some of the latest and greatest info that Solomar's working on. So that was one of the things that the Destination Council we wanted to give, was, hey, help us design this pamphlet. What do you think? So, good stuff, still moving forward. In fact, there was a, an Airbnb host in Claremont who was looking to expand. So we've gotten that person in touch with the city for planning and zoning, as well as the Small Business Administration, because they're saying, hey, I want, I need to build more units to rent out for vacation-type stuff, other resources that you can connect me with. So very quickly, Chris Seek from Solomar said, oh, yeah, you can do small business, do this, do this, do this, and you're getting in touch with the locals, and so.
That's what he does.
Yeah, exactly. So Nancy Merrill got connected by Penelope, and so just good sharing of resources and knowledge, and, you know, the responsiveness was pretty neat, so.
And that's weird. It almost sounds like Sanofi said about Airbnb and other areas, it makes more sense.
Well, the Lake, the Lake communities are tough, because you have a lot of people that live there year-round, have lived there forever. And when the neighborhood starts to turn into, you know, Thursday through Sunday, you know, Animal House.
Yeah.
Yeah, it becomes an issue, and.
Right, for Claremont, it's more, yeah. And we're not gonna overtake.
Yeah, well, plus I think these, this particular person lives out in the, in the booties a little bit, so it's, I'll be upsetting neighbors with wild parties, but. Workforce development, no real updates. Other than to say, the First Visioning Committee meeting was held here for the Claremont Tech Center. It was something that stemmed from the public hearing in the deliberative section regarding the budget changes that they wanted to make for the Tech Center. And there was quite a bit of public response about, whoa, we need to think about this. And so one of the positive developments from all that was, let's get a citizen committee together to talk about the Tech Center. What do we want it to look like in the, in down the road? How many programs should we have? What program should we have? Will it all fit? You know, those types of big strategic questions. And so it sounds like the first meeting was interesting, because there's such a diversity of, of big rocks that people are bringing to the table. So you've got the school boards like, hey, cost matters. This thing needs to be responsive to the taxpayer. So we really care about, you know, how are we measured? Dollars per student or dollars per course? But the cost is important. And the other people are like, yeah, but we want to make sure that we're setting up our kids for the best possible job opportunities. And what program should we have? And so you take all these different things, and at first it's like, oh, there's no way we could possibly address all these issues. But really, when you think about it, you gotta do that upfront, because they're all important.
That stuff they should have been doing two years ago, which, yeah.
Well, it's happening now, so that's kind of cool.
And they decided, is Alex still on?
Yeah, that was one of the, so the budget, the funding got restored, so his position is secure.
Well, put it to the school board. Okay, that, I was saying, put the money in, but the school board's gonna vote to spend it.
Well, they, no, the school board puts it in, and then the superintendent spends it. It's just like us with.
Yeah, but I mean, just because of deliberative section, they put the money in, they don't have to spend it for that.
Right, but it's the superintendent that does the spending. He's their, he's their version of executive branch. So the, the school board appropriates it. It's been appropriated.
Okay.
So it's in the budget.
Okay.
And it, yes, it is going to get. And then the Trails project, we had the handoff meeting last week, because the planner at the Regional Planning Commission is leaving. So he's actually handing off this project to the planner who's been working with the SEDs. So as soon as Tim finishes the SEDs, he's gonna turn his attention to the Trails project. So it's, it's not ideal. I think Alex was the ideal person for that project, because he had done it already. He had a couple of Trails plans on his resume, but, but Tim's great, and Tim's done a really good job with the SEDs, and there's a lot of overlap with the SEDs and the Trails plan, so it's, it's a good outcome still. It's just gonna take a little longer, I think, because he's gotta finish, finish up the SEDs first. And speaking of which, that's the last item on here. He's working on the final draft, so it should come pretty soon. I, I think he has to do some public engagement, and I don't know what his plan is for that yet in terms of, you know, sharing it. And I don't think he has like a public hearing or something like that. He's in charge of that. I'll figure out what he's doing, and if we need to support it, we will.
Dave had a good point earlier, I can tell, about buying some memberships to the Makerspace. I thought that was a good point for this, for the people that stay.
Sure.
Yeah, instead of like, he was hoping they'd sell like five for yearly for rotation, instead of everybody getting a membership.
Oh, right, right, right.
You know, so we could have people pop over from here.
Yeah. I bet you they'd probably be down with that. I've talked to Steve about it, so. Yep. Cool.
It's a good idea.
Yep.
Obviously, we can't afford one day. Everybody would say, we pick a number that we could buy, that when everybody, you know, 30 people walk over at once, it won't fly.
Yeah.
That won't happen, I shouldn't think.
And as long as we can manage it so that when someone who's out, they know that they can't.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, you can stay at Sullivan House for 12 years. Yes. Where's the CNC? Oh, one thing I forgot to mention back on the, on the Sullivan House update. Mary, we, we still have a few items, so it's, one thing is, it's obvious, no one's living here yet. We still are waiting on the certificate of occupancy.
Yeah, we still have some hanging wires on the fire thing out front.
Yeah, we had some issues with the alarms over the weekend. We thought they'd been tested, but something, I think Nick said he thought one of the pole stations in that corner room downstairs in the basement was just a bad pole station. That was triggering.
Jill was pulling on some loose wires earlier.
There's a few temporary wires. I think, we still have a data wire here.
But we are, we're leaning on Blanca Bailey. It's just, it's, everything is, it's a bit of a struggle to try to get over the fender slide.
You talk about curtains here. Are there curtains in the rooms?
Yep, there's shades.